Let's call a meeting to order at 2 o'clock. Jay, roll call?
Roll call?
Yeah.
Mike Ridley?
Here.
Bob Kramer?
Here.
Bobby Blazevic?
Here.
Janet Vance?
Here.
And myself, here.
Okay, approval of agenda.
Can I add an item?
We're all here, so what is your item?
I would like to schedule the capital improvement plan public hearing on June 6th simultaneously with the budget hearing at 6:30 PM.
So we'll have a motion to schedule that and we'll make that a, an item.
Number eight?
Number, it will be number seven.
Eight?
Eight? After the, after public comment?
No.
No.
After transition.
Oh, this, I'm looking at the wrong one. This is the old one, yeah.
No.
Okay, sure. No problem.
Thank you.
Any more, certainly.
Do we have a second?
Is there support? And all in favor? Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, approval of agenda. We're all sat there. Okay, public comment on agenda items. Yes, Dawn?
Hang on. I want to comment on agenda item number five, transfer of funds brought up under the treasurer's report given at the regular meeting on May 2nd. There were three other items reported that needed to be addressed that are likely going to cause the same material weaknesses on this year's audit that we had in '21. The one that you are addressing is the least worrisome to me, as I would suspect that it was a similar mistake to payroll being processed without the treasurer's approval. I'm disappointed that the accounts not balancing, handling of cash and checks, and the bill payments are not included.
Okay, thank you. Public comment on agenda items, yes sir?
My name is Patrick McGuinness. Understanding that mistakes can be made, I would like to request that the board correctly reflect today's date on their agenda item because this is an official record.
What did we add down there? Okay, it was today. Eight! Thank you, sir. So noted. So noted. Who is the yutz that put this together? Short! Okay, thank you.
That's what happens to short timers.
Many more public comment on agenda items. Public comment is closed. Item five, a public explanation of the transfer of funds brought up during Tuesday's regular township meeting, 5223.
Okay, it's gonna be neat. I'm just gonna read this because it's easier. Excuse me, I'm battling sinus infection, so my voice, and if I cough, I apologize. Start out with that. Regarding the movement of money transaction on 4/24/23, the scenario of events, I received the bank statements to balance the accounts on 5/1/23, and in balancing those accounts, two transactions happened at the bank that were not recorded in the BSNA system, and those transactions were out of the ordinary. I looked through my normal banking paperwork that I keep and did not locate those transactions. I then reached out to Citizens National Bank to check the login that made the transaction to clarify the situation. The login that I was given was not my login. Because there are only two logins for Citizens National Bank, I made the assumption that the clerk login was used to make this transaction, these transactions, there were two. After a discussion with Jay, another discussion with Citizens National Bank, and some more research, I realized that I did make those transfers. These funds were the final disbursement for taxes from the county that Neil, our CPA, had directed me to process through the general fund. Because of all of the circumstances at the time, this assumption seemed perfectly reasonable to me. Looking back, I now do know better than to ever assume anything. I mean, I know better than that. I have personally apologized to Jay, and now I would like to offer my apology to the rest of the board and the community for any acrimony that this statement could have caused. I did not intentionally do this. I relied on what was happening in the office and what was happening on paper, and I did the wrong thing, so I apologize to all of you.
I accept, I accept your apology.
Thank you. So, and the best news is that the money is where it's supposed to be and there was no issue, so that was my concern. So we're all sat there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All set.
I have a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. It takes a lot of courage, thank you.
Here, you take one and Jay gets one.
Thank you.
Okay, written resignations. That's, Bob, that was your request to have that? Or Jay, was that Jay?
I mean, you all are requesting it, but Bob needed it.
Oh, okay.
We have yours, correct?
Correct, you've got mine and...
I didn't see it, but I assumed it's in...
No, I didn't. Someone must have seen it.
So I'd like to move that we accept with regret Mike Ridley's resignation.
I second that motion with regret as well.
Okay, any more comment? More discussion? I don't know how I vote on this. All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, opposed? Abstain?
Okay, so we've got one abstention.
One abstention. Okay, transition plan for new township officials. I told Jay that I had mine already. It's a list of my statutory duties on May 20th, my keys, that that will be available. I will be available if somebody has a problem. The secret to that job is right in here. It's who you know how to call when you get stuck. And I believe I use that to access...
Does that mean Blake Smith won't bother you anymore?
You get Blake Smith, you get Bobby Benzinski, you get the DNR, you get M.D. It's, again, we're beating a dead horse, but it's transitional, mine is in place, I'm pretty sure.
Do you want to know about mine? I have been working with Val at the bank to discuss the banking procedures that's going to be the biggest hurdle to jump with things. What will have to happen at the meeting where you appoint a new treasurer is you will have to outline also the steps for the bank in replacing the admin for the payroll, Magic Writer account. That's going to be the biggest thing, is putting that in writing, who the admin is, and that you will continue to follow state law in processing by the clerk and treasurer, and then getting that person set up for training and getting a login for Magic Writer.
So who is that, that's you currently, is that correct?
That is me. Yep, and so there's nothing I have to sign off on, it's board minutes, she's, you know, fully aware of what's happening. So board minutes stating who that admin will be, and then you'll process, same thing, you'll name the four signatures on the bank cards, and that will be just like how we did it, Jay. The, I believe what we're going to have to do internally, and she said she's okay with this, is that very first payroll, you won't be able to process, I don't think, signature cards and things like that fast enough to get that person on payroll. So if the new treasurer is okay with it, I can come in, sit down with them, and process that last payroll and switch everything over at that time. Val thought that would be the smoothest transition for that.
That's because the last payroll is going to be, well, it's going to be dated to 20th, but it'll actually come through on probably...
Right. 22nd, 23rd.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, the Magic Writer will happen on Monday or Tuesday.
Right.
So 18th, 17th.
Yeah, so that's going to be the only tricky part there. I've been speaking with the girls at the county in the treasurer's office, equalization office, they will be supportive of everything, and my recommendation will be call me, or I have a couple of other treasurers in the area that are very helpful, whose names I can give when treasurer questions come up. So there's lots of support out there, BSNA is always the biggest support in the transition, so.
That'd be true, yeah.
I got a question. If we got your written resignation sooner and then we immediately appointed, wouldn't the bank allow us to...
No, you have...
You have to take office, is that...
You have to take office. Yep, so that's why that transition, as I think you've talked to Matt, I've talked to Matt, he's emailed the board, the, you know, everything's on track as far as you've posted it, you've got a plan to appoint people, that can happen up to 30 days before, but the actual switch over of officers does not happen until the day Mike and I leave office.
Sorry about that.
So nothing official can happen. You can, you just have all the pieces in place so that it happens immediately on the 20th. So he said, Matt said we're on track perfectly for that part of it.
I'm wondering if, I mean, it's part of my statutory duty, but I'm wondering, at some point, could you give us all a list of every bank account?
Yeah.
Like a number, Citizens National Bank, and the balance? I've never seen it, I know they exist.
Yeah, that's what I give you every month, Bob.
No, no, I mean, in the treasury report?
Yep, that gives you the beginning balance, ins and outs.
Isn't that by fund though? Do we have an account for each one of those?
They don't have the account number on there, I think is what he's referring to.
No.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean...
So you're saying that on the treasury report, we have a bank account for each one of those?
No, the general fund, no, we don't. So I guess we'd have to talk about that, I'm not sure if that's something the whole board should have, and it seems like putting our bank account numbers out there...
We don't need the account.
I don't need the account numbers, but I just kind of like to know, well, if we, let's say we have eight accounts.
Yeah, give you the names and...
Yeah, the name, is that a shared account with something else? Is that only the general fund?
Yeah.
Or does that include the DDA and something else?
Yeah, absolutely.
And what's the balance? I'd just kind of like to know for...
Can we use the last four digits?
I guess...
Ah, nah.
Yeah.
Nah, nah, sorry.
I mean, we can ask...
You could even show it to...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that without an attorney or an accountant or someone telling me to do that, because that seems...
You could just show it.
You can just name the account and at least you would know it.
Yeah, and that's, I call them by name, so I can, yeah, yeah.
Because, and this is, this is my bad, I get confused when I hear the words pool and, you know, so I'd just kind of like to have a general oversight.
Yeah.
And we could do that in your office.
Right, yeah, and I can use that, that report does generally run by that, the funds are listed, so I can go over that with you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So Bobby, for us to move forward officially, even though you haven't done your written resignation yet, officially you plan on leaving on the 20th?
The 20th, yeah.
Okay, so that will give us some kind of timeline, because I wasn't sure for sure if that was your drop dead date.
Yeah.
So that is, okay. All right.
One more question, Bobby, is there any upcoming events that we need to be made aware of for a new treasurer?
The July tax bill going out will be the first undertaking, but that's the easiest tax bill to get out, winter tax bills are the ones that take some work, and again, I've spoken with the equalization and the county treasurer, I've spoken with Doug, those are the people that will help set that up, and then basically, once you're in sync with those three parties, it's pushing buttons in BSNA and they will lock.
You gave me that date once, could you give it to me again? When it's got to be to KCI?
I'd have to look, it's June...
In the last Friday of June or something?
No, that's when they mail them out.
Okay.
So it's like June 12th or 15th, it's the middle of the month, middle of June.
We have to have it to KCI?
To KCI.
Oh, I thought you said the 4th or something.
No, they'll start to, you'll start to kind of get things going that first week in June, and then it has to be back to KCI, and really that date, if there was some, you know, big snafu that someone ran into some trouble, which I don't foresee, by law, we shoot for July 1st to have them in people's mailboxes. If they don't hit people's mailboxes until July 5th, there's no issue, so that, there's a little flexibility with that date.
But there's no deadline in the law.
No, nope, so it's just July 1st is...
The first week of July is really your target.
So just to make sure I understand what you told me before, step one is you get a file from the assessor?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
And then it goes to the...
He sends it to everyone, everyone's going to balance their numbers.
Okay.
And then...
And then it goes to the county?
It goes to the county and to the treasurer at the same time.
Okay.
They'll balance numbers, they talk about it, they give the treasurer the thumbs up.
The county does.
County, county, yeah.
Okay.
You originally are looking for it from the county.
So they do have to look for something that might be a little off or something, is that what...
Yeah, and that'll all be Doug doing all of that part, the treasurer, you know, I've assisted in the past, but Doug will take care of that for this person.
I know you might not know this off the top of your head, but...
You're talking about keeper, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a new, what the value of a mill is?
No, it'll be the same for summer, there's not any change in some of our villages. So no...
I'm just looking forward to budget. You remember?
It's, no, it's, we have to be able to prepare the budget.
Yeah.
939696, something like that.
Yeah, we got the documents from the...
It's on the equalization report, is that correct?
Yeah.
The L04029s?
Yeah.
Is that what, okay.
Yeah.
So we have that information, and we will also be sending around the information for the 23rd, or 2023 L0429s, to prepare those for, like you said, the winter tax bills.
Yes, yeah.
Where we can, whatever, modify them or not modify them, whatever we got to do.
So yeah, the summer tax bill is the easier one, those are set.
All right. So I'll send, I'll send that information out to the board. I have it now.
Anything else? Transition plans, okay. Schedule your public hearing on the CIP, June 6th.
Before I make that motion, do you think it would be okay to do both public hearings simultaneously, or should we do them separate? Because it's so interrelated. So the public can come in and talk about the budget and the CIP, or should we do them separate?
Wait, I'm gonna tell you, June 6th is going to be your call, but if I was, I would do it at the same time, because you're going to have all the numbers up in front of you at the same time.
You agree? So I'll make that motion that we amend our budget hearing date of 6:30 on June 10th to include not only just the budget, but also the CIP.
Okay, there's a motion, is there support?
So what's, wait a minute, what's the motion now that you're making?
The motion is to simultaneously conduct a public hearing for the CIP and the budget.
Your date is June 6th?
At June 6th at 6:30 PM in this room. So if we approve this, I would just go into the web and add the word "and CIP."
Okay.
Public hearing on budget and CIP.
Six discussion?
6:30.
6:30.
I think you have to approve it, right?
Approve it, yeah, okay.
Okay, there's a motion, is there support?
I support.
Nope.
Oop, we have two reports.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey Mike, I have a question about the CIP, seeing how we put it together, Bob. Is there still going to be a workshop ahead of that, or are we just going to review it?
Yes, we should, we should have one, and I'd appreciate it if you could come and...
Yeah, hopefully it's during my, yeah, I'll try to be there, I'm sure.
Yeah, or one of your folks.
Okay.
Just in case we have any questions.
No, I'll make sure, because I think hopefully we've sent out all the detail behind.
Yeah, I got it this morning from...
From Dawn, or from Jane?
From Jane, yes.
Yeah, she had it all compiled, so, okay, good.
We have one more, we have to add one more, so I'll send that to you later in the session. There was one more CIP page that was, we didn't have in that last submission, so I'll send it to you.
Yeah, sure.
The DDA? Yeah, the DDA, we didn't have all the detail, but...
I know this isn't exactly protocol, but since we're talking about this, could I yield the floor to Mr. Chairman, and he could explain what they went through the process?
Yeah, would you please do that, Mike?
And what we're talking about. You can just sit right there.
Well, they need to hear him too.
Yeah, okay.
Just, unfortunately, this was a late thing that we did, pulled together all the different capital improvement plans from the DDA, from the Parks Commission, from the township, fire, or police department, I may be missing somebody else, but because the Parks Commission supposedly had done their five-year, six-year plan out earlier, we didn't have detail, I know Janet sat down with Doug Schofield and picked out the things that we needed, so we had a meeting, you know, a few months ago, and Janet was there, or a month ago or so, and we talked about how we were going to pull it together, so I got to give kudos to Jane, who's not here, or she is here.
She's here.
And to Dawn, because we talked about it, they put it together so we could look at it, and so hopefully, next year, after the master plan comes out, that's when you should do the CIP.
It's got to be...
It should be based on your goals on the master plan. Unfortunately, this year, because it was a late addition, hopefully, I know Bob, you gave us a lot of kudos for it, but, you know, these two girls, or two women worked hard to putting this together, and the rest of it, John Chams and Lisa, and was it, Mike Ridley was on it.
I remember I watched one meeting online, and it was like two hours.
Yeah, the last one that we actually pulled, we had a lot of back and forth between what we would put on as needed, what we would put on in the future, and then there was quite a few, not quite a few, but a few items that were for paving, that, you know, we put either between SAD, that would be funded, or through the township or the county, but we listed everything that we had, from anywhere from 2019, 20, 2023 to 2027 or '28, so hopefully we captured everything we could, and like I said, in the future, we want to get more deeper into this thing, so, but I appreciate all the help we got from, you know, our planning commission, so, thanks.
I'm going to talk about that in further comments.
Okay, I think that was it.
Public commentary.
Public comment. Public comment, yes ma'am?
This is on still?
Yes, it is.
Time, okay. I just have a comment regarding the publishing of minutes. Section 72A 5, if a township has a taxable value as calculated under section 27A, blah, 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 the Michigan compiled law, of 50 million or more, the township board, not more than 21 days after a meeting of the board, shall publish the proceedings of the meeting in a newspaper of general circulation in the township. The publication of a synopsis of the proceedings prepared by the township clerk and approved by the supervisor showing the substance of each separate proceeding of the board is sufficient compliance with the requirements of this subsection. Got a chart here, and according to this chart, the minutes published in the Sheboygan Tribune have been on average 20 days late. The last published synopsis was on March 29th, for the February 7th, 28 days late, and February 17th, 18 days late. The March 7th meeting, now 62 days late, the April 4th meeting, now 34 days late, and the April 5th, now 33 days late, have not been published as of today. So I read the chart in this here, might be helpful in complying with that requirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Public comment? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to start out by saying excellent job on getting the donations for the fireworks. However, according to your policy and the cash receiving policy, that monies has still not entered into the township bank's accounts. Nothing was addressed again today about the cash receiving coming in and not going through the treasurer. Wondering when this will be addressed, and when the bank accounts will reflect the monies collected for the fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Yes, sir?
My name's Rod Brandy, and first I want to start by thanking Mike for his service. You've always carried yourself honorably, and I've always been fair, and you'll be missed. Thank you. And then I'll just start with my comments. I want to briefly comment on the transfer of funds. For those who heard my comments at the May 2nd meeting regarding rumors, misinformation, and lies leading to turmoil and contributing to a toxic environment, this is exactly what I was talking about. The May 2nd meeting was going very well, the board seemed to be agreeing on most all topics, and was actually voting unanimously on those agenda items, all until the treasurer's report, and then the gloves came off, the misinformation changed the tone of that meeting. Community members started to accuse Jay of illegally transferring funds, asking, what are we going to do about this, saying we're in big trouble here, and actually threatening to contact the state about this. Problem is, Jay evidently never made those transfers. You really couldn't ask for a better example as to what I was referring to. At the April 4th meeting, there were community members demanding accountability and consequences for supposed slanderous comments and misinformation, and accusation made towards Bob, Jay, and Janet. Well, let's see if there's the same call for accountability now. Also, after the May 2nd meeting, I took the time to watch all board meetings that I've been able to attend in person over the last year or so, mainly because I like to form my opinions on what I witness myself and not what I hear in the rumor mill. Toxicity is actually very easy to spot in body language tone, and especially in context of people's comments and accusations. So for those of you who like to form your opinions based on facts and your own observations, such as I do, I suggest you do as I did, think back, watch back with an open mind, and decide who and what's toxic. Thank you.
Public comment? Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Patty Murdock. I know that transitions can be tough, especially in a small community board, and one thing I'm just a little concerned about, and I want to make sure if there's anything that we can do to help, is that I want to make sure that all the work that's gone into the sewer project for Phase 1, 2, and 3, that we're not missing anything, and if we are, what is needed and how could some of us help to get that done? There's been a lot of work done, and I'd hate to see that slide, and with so few people on a board, I know that that can happen, okay?
Thank you.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Knowing, knowing these board members as I do, even the ones that depart, their heart is near and dear to this sewer project. I'm not going to speak for you, but that's what I feel, that it's near and dear. The two of you, especially early on, went through a lot of pain, so I can assure you that if I call upon them for help, and Janet on our committee calls upon them for help, I am very confident they'll do everything they can to help us, I really feel that way, and I thank you in advance for that.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, public comment?
Jeff Milner. Going back to the comments that were written for the April 26 public comments section, I said that I was concerned about the attorney being present at the meetings, and I can understand that there might be a reason for that, I'm not sure what it is, but my concern was actually the cost that it's costing our taxpayers. We have, I think, a $12,000 budget for attorney's fees, and I know how much attorneys cost, and if we have one sitting in our meeting every time, I'm not sure we can stay within that budget. So my concern was the cost of it, not the actual fact of him being here. I'm going to reflect back, this might sound like a question, but I know you guys can't have dialogue during this time, so I'm going to make it more of a comment. The April 20th meeting that was canceled, I mentioned this last week, or last meeting, the resolution that came out on April 19th before the meeting happened was all filled out. So you think about it for a second. The meeting never happened, but the resolution was filled out. It had everybody that attended, it had how they voted, and it was ready for a signature. Now, it was published online, I'm sure that, looking back, you probably didn't want that to happen, and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that meetings are taking place that are not in the public, but it's part of the Open Meetings Act. And just so I can get it right. All decision, decisions of a public body shall be made at a meeting open to the public. It's that simple. So if this resolution, which I have a copy of, has all the decisions already made on the 19th prior to the meeting taking place, how did that happen? Somebody either talked about it and you had a meeting prior to the 20th, which got canceled, or you made about 12 mistakes on this one piece of paper. I just want you guys to know that you can't make up rules as you go. And you surely don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act. That's one of the things that makes all of this work. So be careful.
Hang tight. Hang tight.
It's not a dialogue time.
Yeah, but I, but I have a right to respond.
Okay, well, you want to do more board comments?
No, I'd like to respond frankly. That's my fault. You can blame me. I put that in there based on a previous meeting with Michigan class, but to be quite frankly, we've all been guilty of this for many, many times when we filled out resolutions. We just filled it all in and if we didn't vote that way, we corrected it. Am I correct?
Okay, that's a violation. It is.
Well, that's your opinion. You.
No, that's law, Bob.
You can go to court. You can go to the police. You can go to the court, do what you want, but I'm just, I'm just telling you that I take responsibility for that.
It won't happen again.
And it won't happen again. It's been done many times in the past.
Bring the room to order, please.
And that's how we learn.
Thank you. Let's move on. Public comment, please? Yes, sir.
Henry Herple. Slander describes defamatory statements in the form of spoken words, such as accusations on someone claiming that a crime was committed. Slander damages another person's reputation and is actionable in a civil suit. The slanderous statements and the false allegations made against our township clerk, Jay Riedsmann, were witnessed by all of us that attended the May 2nd meeting, as well as everyone that watched it on Indian River flows. The public accusations made by Treasurer Blazevic and repeated by Mrs. Snyder were false and thus slanderous. It is unknown at this point whether or not there will be civil suits for slander. But for the good of our community and to put an end to the current toxicity, we hope that Mrs. Blazevic will submit her written resignation today.
Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I want to address the, two of the things that weren't addressed today that came out at the May meeting. Accounts not balancing. We were told that the accounts aren't balanced and haven't been balanced since December. As you recall, one of the audit material weakness findings that were, that was reported in the 21-year-end audit was because we didn't balance until October of '21. The accounting procedures manual states all bank accounts must be reconciled to the local unit accounting records monthly and should be reviewed by the appropriate supervisor, supervisory personnel. Our corrective action response we provided to the treasurer stated that we would immediately seek outside help, assistance to remain within the 30 to 60 day window as required. Washing out in the end is not going to work. That does not work. From the day one, there was access to a CPA that specializes in governmental accounting. He knows BSNA like the back of his hand. He could have been called in January, February, March, April and now in May to come and fix this. He brings his own equipment, his laptop, his extra monitor. He sits in this room and he works on it until he gets it fixed. It is too late now. We're going to take another hit for a material weakness on our audit this year because we're not balanced. The other thing I want to address is payment of bills. We also had a material weakness in '21 over financial reporting for approval of dispersments prior to payment. And that was payroll because we weren't providing it to the board each month at board meetings. We had access to it, but we didn't bring it into the meetings for approval. The corrective action response was a post audit policy we put in place that states all claims to be approved by the board prior to dispersments with typical exemptions for payroll, utility bills and invoices with penalties or discounts. Again, it was reported that there were approximately $41,000 in bills paid prior to being presented to the board last month. I looked. That's correct. I went back and pulled the reports off the board packets. So that was correct. It's a recurring problem that's been brought up to the board in the past and it's not fixed. And again, this is something that we're going to get hit with a material weakness for on the, on our audit this year. You need to get ahold of Neil. Get him in here and get those books balanced.
Thank you. Public comment? Yes, sir?
My name is Patrick McGinnis. I would just like, I know this is just a comment. There's no response required. But I'd like to be clear with Mr. Kramer's statement that it's okay to violate law as long as you apologize for it.
I never said that.
That's exactly what you said.
That's enough. That's your comment.
No, he responded to me. I'm responding to him.
Okay, let's not have a discussion, please. Just public comment.
That's what I said. I said it wasn't a discussion. He decided make it a discussion. Mike, Mike, you are too nice of a guy. That's all it is.
I know, Ben. I'm sorry. Just who I am.
Okay, public comment, people. Okay, public comment is closed. Board comments? Bob?
Anyway, I just wanted to thank the planning commission and I sent out an email to some folks and asked the folks to kind of spread it around. And I had one person say, well, goddamn Kramer, why is this such a big deal? I'll tell you why. I think it's a big deal, okay? Number one, the law requires it. If you have a sewer system, by law, our planning commission has to do it. And they stepped up and they did it. And we can't even start on a, a long-term strategic plan until we have this CIP. Is it perfect? No. Is everybody going to agree with what they came up with? But I have looked at a lot of CIPs, as you know, the county, charter townships. And I would encourage every one of you, I would encourage every one of you to go online on the tuscoretwp.com. Right at the very top left, it says draft CIP and you can see the work that everybody did. And the beauty of this, it's for the whole community. And the purpose of the public hearing is if, if we miss something that you think's important or if you think it's out of whack or the cost is too low or too high, I'm sure these folks would, and we would love to have feedback. So it's really, really important, I think, that if you want to be involved in the community, please look at that, come to the public hearing, give your comments. We truly want it to be a community-wide prioritization list. Doesn't mean we're going to be able to fund it all, but at least we know, I think we'll know where we're supposed to be headed at the end of this process. So again, I want to thank the planning commission and everyone that gave input from the various departments.
Thank you. Bobby, anything? Jay?
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to mention that we do have a candidate in mind for the admin, which we will, I believe, be bringing before the board here to discuss compensation and get that approved as soon as possible. Secondly, there is a, a project that was started under Dawn. And it's now coming to completion. That's the change in the chart of accounts, the uniformed chart of accounts. I'm sure you've seen this before and where it is. And that is going to change over this coming week. And so I'll have to bring what those changes are to Bobby and to anybody else that has an interest, obviously. What they're trying, obviously, they're trying to come up with a, a new set of account numbers for the fund, the departments, for the activities that take a noise out of the system, I guess. In other words, to provide more flexibility, but at the same time kind of re-engineer it. I don't know how else to state it. But in any case, we have a spreadsheet of where we're at, where we're going, and we'll be able to make the necessary adjustments. And there's some things I got to follow up on with BSA and with Neil. And by the way, we did bring it to Neil to have him take a look at what is being recommended. And he didn't have a problem with the fact, there will be change and we can't get around that. But he didn't have a problem with what the change was going to be. But I've identified a couple of questionable areas where I need to get further information from BSNA and from Neil. We'll get it squared away. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Janet?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Just for the record, Bob, I don't recall ever filling out a resolution like at that meeting. Just, just for the record, I think there was confusion about. Okay. I don't know if I have anything else to say. Is this closer and closer? I've enjoyed working. I'm going to miss you. Every time somebody called on the special meeting, show up and I'll just do this all over again. I'm, I'm holding my own. I'm not modeling, so. I don't think I have anything other than that to say. Motion to adjourn? So.
Okay.
So move.